It's showtime. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Sugar Land City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 18th. A little bit about our agenda tonight. Stuart Jacobson is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. That will be followed by a recognition of our MIAC class 2020. Welcome to all the MIAC students. And that will be followed by our Healthcare Heroes Week, a recognition. So Stuart, let me turn it over to you for the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. God, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Protect those who wish their own safety for ours. And build us with the strength to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this in the name by which each of us knows you. Amen.
Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a great looking picture of our MIAC students. Let me turn it over. Paulina, do you want to? I've got a few comments, but let me recognize you. Paulina Valero, who read, who led, I'm sorry, who led the MIAC class this year. Paulina, I think this was your first MIAC class to lead it all the way through, wasn't it?
That is, well, not all the way through. Kayla Norsecut started the program last year, and then I took over around the new year.
Well, that's even tougher. Well, thank you all for joining us tonight. This is the 15th MIAC class. And there were 33 individuals that were selected from 10 different high schools. As you all know more than anybody else, you guys are now coming into your senior year. It's an exciting time to get it behind you before you get on with the rest of your lives. Hopefully, hopefully, we've convinced many, if not all, of you to come back and serve on our boards and commissions and even council and mayor. So that was the end goal. I know I shared that with you at the beginning. I'll remind you of that. It wasn't necessarily a commitment that you made, but it was a commitment that we made to you. And now, congratulations. Paulina, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also thank all the staff from the different departments, Public Works, CNS, Police, Fire, and Economic Development for sharing their time and expertise with us. Very special thanks to Carrie, Jessica, Kayla, Sylvia, and Ryan for all their help. I'm very proud of this class for their resilience and their flexibility. No other class before faced the challenges presented by this pandemic while trying to finish up a school year, think about college applications, and complete this program. I am very proud of you all. I'm very happy to have met you, and I know that you will go on and do great things. I would like to recognize Abel John and Kevin Early for their exceptional leadership roles during the year. Abel has a few words he'll like to share with us, and he'll help me out with reading the names of each of the students. And so he'll be followed by Kevin Early, who also has brief remarks.
Perfect. Thank you, Paulina. Abel John, welcome. Floor is yours.
Mr. Zimmerman, hi. Thank you. To begin with, for this recognition, I'm just going to list down each of the members, the 33 members that were part of our council this year. So I'll be calling out your names. If you can just wave, do something like that to recognize yourself as I read the names. That would be amazing. First of all, Olivia Aziz, Mira Borle, Jonathan Chang, Kushi Desai, Kevin Early, Pranavi Gupta, Maisha Hassan, Aircom Ismailir, Ahil Jamal, Abel John, which is me, Cameron Crouch, Joshua Kuntz, Nicholas Kuntz, Zaid Malji, Jake Lamke, Owen LaRaca, Lisa Magnogia, Alan Macosa, Rishi Marakani, Shanzo Mirsa, Lucas Moore, Ryan Nutter, Aman Pandwani, Andrew Powellman, Austin Perbet, Sriram Satish, Nikita Sudhakar, Sheena Sudharia, Abhinav Vidhastri, Lauren Wang, Blake Watts, Jason Wu, and lastly, Bella Shu. So I'd like to thank everybody, just give a quick thanks that won't take up too much of your time. First of all, the mayor, Mayor Zimmerman, you did, you know, an excellent job in leading us throughout the year. I mean, I know for a fact that like your own experiences, what you did tell to us, and your work as mayor has definitely been an inspiration for a lot of our members. And whether it was the regular meetings where you answered a lot of our members' questions about how your office worked and ran, but also during the pandemic when you were able to answer our questions about how the Sugar Land, you know, government was going to function then, too. You've really been a mayor through thick and thin. You've definitely guided us, you know, and shown us, you know, the resilience of the Sugar Land government. I'd also love to thank Ms. Valero. You know, as she said, she took up the office of leading us halfway through the year. But since then, we've done an excellent job in making sure that, you know, we have everybody attend the meetings. We've had nearly perfect attendance for all of our meetings, and even then during the pandemic, which literally stopped schools still, you know, host meetings and get stuff done. And I'm very confident that in future years, she'll do an excellent job in her position. And finally, I want to thank the MIAC members, you know, all 33 of us who took the time out of school, which can get very, very busy, especially during junior year, to take the time and actually learn about how our government functions from going to, you know, training sessions of the police department, to the fire department, to even the animal services. I mean, I feel like I've come out of this with a really well-rounded perspective on how our government works and how it functions. And I'm excited for what the future holds for Sugar Land and all of our MIAC members. So thank you.
Thank you, Abel John.
Kevin?
Hello. My name is Kevin Early, and I was this year's MIAC service chair. Every year, the MIAC class comes together to serve our community. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we could not volunteer as a group. However, I am pleased to report that MIAC members individually volunteered a total of 252 hours with 25 different organizations. I'm glad to be part of such a decated group of high schoolers.
Kevin, congratulations to you and the class. I've got to share with you, when you guys were first on, the council members on the dais, we were laughing because we have one of our council members masquerading as a MIAC member. Hamesh Gandhi was the only one that fit into the group. And we said, well, who is that guy? Well, there he is. That's our own council member out there trying to be a MIAC class member. So we had a little bit of fun with that. He was the only one that couldn't be distinguished from you guys. The rest of us are old enough to where we couldn't get lost in the crowd. So, look, I want to really congratulate you. I want to say you guys stayed through, you know, a pandemic, very unusual, you know, year. No less so, I know, for when you guys finished up your junior year and now as you come into your senior year. Just remember that that ability to adapt, adapt to any condition will certainly do you well in your careers. I know for me, it was a big part of, I know what I shared with you when I did the overseas assignment, not necessarily something I wanted to do, but certainly a greater power had other plans. And with, I certainly recognize now the tremendous benefit that that had. And I believe you all will find, as you go forward into your future careers and into college, that what you've gone through during this pandemic and staying with us in this MIAC class, everything you've been through will shape your characters, and it will shape your resolve to succeed. So again, congratulations to all of you. We wish you nothing but the best on whatever career path, whatever college you select. And we look forward to getting you back here. I'm not going to let you forget that commitment. Look forward to you getting back to Sugar Land in a role. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we go, everyone, please smile and look at your camera straight on so that we can take a screenshot and take this as a group photo. Because we have a couple of screens, just hold off for a few seconds, and then we'll say bye. All right? So, smile. Let me, all right, hold on. Let me see if we got it. All right, one more, just to be safe. One, two, three. All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. You can log off the call now. You don't need to stay for the entire call. So thank you again. You have a great rest of your summer and start of the school year, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you all. Let everybody get logged off, and then we'll move on. All right, let's move on. We're going to have a recognition, Healthcare Heroes Week, which we've declared, I've declared as August 24th through the 28th of 2020. You know, I think for our city council and certainly for all the citizens of Sugar Land and I'd even expanded into the region, the men and women that have stood on the front lines are healthcare heroes from the hospitals, from Methodist, from St. Luke's, from Memorial Hermann, from other hospitals, certainly the Texas Medical Center. The doctors, the nurses, the physicians assistants, you know, the administrative staff, people in the executive team, they've worked extraordinary hours to keep our citizens and our city safe. And we wanted to recognize them. When it first started, I think they were getting a lot of recognition. Now, as it's gone on, certainly, I would have never expected this to go on beyond 30 days. I really thought, you know, 30 days was kind of the longest I thought it would be, and I thought it could be sooner than that. Here we are coming into the winter months. Now I can't see it ending through the end of the year and probably into next year until there's some kind of a vaccination. So we wanted to recognize all those individuals that have stood strong on the front lines. We've got a proclamation. Officer of the Mayor of Sugar Land, Texas, Healthcare Heroes Week, August 24th through 28th, 2020. Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, our healthcare workers who provide quality care often in our most vulnerable life moments have proven themselves to be not just essential workers, but frontline heroes. And whereas during these difficult and unprecedented times, healthcare workers have stepped up to meet the growing medical needs of our community and have made personal and professional sacrifices, including spending long hours separated from their families and loved ones to aid in the fight against COVID-19. And whereas, in order to recognize the heroic sacrifices made by our frontline healthcare workers, the City of Sugar Land encourages all citizens, local organizations, city employees, and public officials to join in celebrating the contributions of our local healthcare workers. And whereas various city facilities, including the Smart Financial Center at Sugar Land and Digital Signage at Constellation Field in Sugar Land Town Square, and community facilities, including Methodist Sugar Land Hospital, Kaiser St. Luke's Hospital, Memorial Hermann Sugar Land Hospital, will be lit up blue in appreciation of our healthcare heroes. And whereas Sugar Landers wish to express their sincere and profound gratitude to our frontline healthcare workers for exemplifying the definition of the Sugar Land way. We want to recognize you. We want to applaud your extreme sacrifice to our community. We want to let you know that there will be a series of activities going on all this week where the community is going to recognize you. We've done this in conjunction with the City of Sugar Land, the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce, and those hospitals that are participating, Sugar Land, Methodist Sugar Land, or Houston Methodist Sugar Land, Memorial Hermann Sugar Land, and Kaiser St. Luke's Sugar Land. So with that, we've got proclamation. We'll be delivering that later this week to those hospitals, to those workers, and we want to applaud their sacrifice and for them keeping us safe. Council members, I'll open it up to you. Anyone? Thank you very much, and we look forward to recognizing you every day of this week. We're now going to move on to item number one, public comment. And this is for those people desiring to comment on one of the items on the agenda that is not a public hearing. We do have a public hearing agenda item, and anybody that happens to be on the phone, if that's their item, then we will, that's on item number five, we will recognize them at that time. Thomas, do we have anybody signed up for any other agenda items?
No, sir, we don't.
Move on to item number two, review of the consent agenda. Item number three, the consent agenda. We're going to take all these items as one motion unless a council member wishes to pull an item, at which time, staff will make a brief presentation and we'll take up that one item. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Porter, second by Gandhi. Any additional discussion? You'll vote at this time, please. Hamesh and Steve, we've got you guys. I don't have your vote recorded.
Thomas, I'm not getting anything up as a vote.
Hey, Thomas, neither am I.
We'll do a roll call vote. Hamesh?
Aye.
Nashad?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jennifer Lane?
Aye.
Stuart?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
An aye for me, and it passes seven to zero. Thank you, council members. Item number four, contracts and agreements for a consideration of an action on a construction contract with Lesman Roofing and Sheet Metal LLC in the amount of $731,752.50 for city facilities roof replacements, major facility rehabilitation, CIP MU 2001. We have with us tonight our own Lane Wolf, manager of vertical construction. Lane?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. Okay, start off, this is our 2020 roofing projects that we have going on. Here you see the images of the police department, TE Harmon, and the fire station. All of these buildings have experienced weather concerns and leaks over the past. They continue to be ongoing issues for facilities to address. On most of these commercial buildings, your average warranty period is 20 to 25 years. The police station is the youngest of these. Police station roof is 24 years old. TE Harmon is 36 years old. And the fire station is 34 years old. You can see, if you look at the middle one, TE Harmon, the upper portion of the roof is bright white. That's because we addressed that high portion of roof last year. We have done four roofs in the past two years. Those include a building over at facilities, Building B. We've also addressed fire station three and five, and the high roof of TE Harmon. We're continuing this roofing work currently, and for this year, we have these three projects. And all of them include either a complete re-roof or an overlay system, and we'll be addressing all the flashings and sealants and metal roofing that you see here. Next slide. So our design firm and our bidding, we're using, for the past two years, we've been using BES, Building Exterior Solutions. They were an independent company until a couple of years ago. They were bought out by Terricon, so they now work underneath the umbrella of Terricon. They specialize in roofing systems and the exterior sealants of buildings. They went through the project design in spring of 2020. Project advertised a bid on June 24th and July 1st. We had a pre-bid site review where we invited all the contractors out to each of the buildings, gave them access to the roof so they could all look, see exactly what the scope of work was, and be able to ask any questions that they have, make sure that we, everybody has a thorough understanding of the project. We received the bids on July 16th, and bids were reviewed and vetted through purchasing and myself and through engineering. Next slide. So BES went out there. What they did to initiate everything was perform assessments. They spent several days on each rooftop, looking at all the conditions. They then went back to their office and prepared detailed scopes of work for each of the roofing assemblies. They also went back to the police department because they had concerns of some leaks that were identified through facilities. So they performed thermal scanning of the roof to see if there was any trapped water up there. Their scope includes a combination of new roof overlays and complete re-roofs, including flashings and sealants. And even at the police station, we're going to be going around and redoing all the sealant around all the windows because we've had a lot of various issues at the police department, and we plan on capturing all those with the scope of work. Good thing about BES is they not only perform the assessments and the specifications for the bid documents, but they've got expert qualified personnel that are out there during every part of the roofing construction. When they tear off the existing roofs, they get up there and look and see if there's any unforeseen conditions, and we can identify those at that time that are hidden right now and address all of them. And then what they'll do at the end of the, they'll perform their weekly reports, and at the very end of the project, they get with the manufacturer's warranty representative, and we all walk the roofing project together. Next slide. Bid tab. Our low bid was Lesman Roofing and Sheet Metal. Lesman's been the low bid for the past two years. The four projects I've mentioned, they have been successfully low, and they've done a great job on all the, pardon me. And they've done a great job on all those projects. Not only did they do a good job, but they have a good working relationship with BES, so it's really easy for BES to come out there, observe the work, identify any flaws in the installation, and they turn around, they don't argue it, they just, they make the proper corrections, and they move on. So as you can see on the bid tab, Lesman Roofing was the overall low bid. We had five good numbers come in, all great companies. We had one company disqualified, CS Advantage, and that was through purchasing, they had an unsigned bond. Next slide. Our budget for this was 1.2 million. We had design services with BES for 51,600. That left us an available balance of 1,148,400. Our construction cost for 731,752 leaves us remaining funds of 416,647.50. With that remaining balance, I will still have to, on TE Harmon, we have a bunch of air conditioning units that are up on the roof. What we'll need to do during the construction is hire a third-party mechanical contractor to come out there and bring a big crane. We're going to have to disconnect those units, pick them up in the air, leave them suspended in the air while the roofer can go up there, rebuild all the curbs, and properly flash everything. Then they'll lower those units back to the roof and make the connections to the new heights. So that'll be a third-party contract I'll be working on, and I'll coordinate that scheduling with the roofing contractor. And then we have contingency funds for all three projects. As I mentioned, once you, the only thing you can do right now when you perform the assessments, what's visual, you never know what you're going to uncover once you start removing the roofing material. So this leaves us a healthy contingency to address any issues that we might come up, that might come up during the construction process. Next slide. And with that, we have the recommendation, authorize a construction contract with Lesman Roofing and Sheet Metal LLC for roof replacements at the police department, TE Harmon Center and Fire Station Number Two, CIP MU 2001, major facility rehabilitation in the amount of $731,752.50.
Thank you, Lane. Hamesh, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Hey, Lane, question. Is this part of a facilities plan that we have where it schedules these roof changes? Or are we doing this kind of out of sequence? Or can you put this in context of how we take care of all the facility roofs? Sorry, I have a phone in the back.
So you're talking about a scheduled maintenance. Yeah, I think Lane just dropped off for a minute. These technical difficulties.
Yeah, it looks like his feet dropped. Yeah, there he is, back.
Lane, did you get my question? I don't know if you heard it.
Yes, I did get your question. Just working with facilities, I know they have a long-term schedule. I don't know all the foreseeable projects that we have right now and how they've established them, but we did have some assessments done in the past. BES came out and looked at a number of the projects, and Stacy Henderson had asked them to kind of prioritize which ones needed to be done. So the ones we have been working on for the past couple of years and this year were just prioritized by BES as the, from the most needing repairs to whichever ones could hold off at one year, two years, three years. I know we're looking at City Hall here in the upcoming period of two years.
So, yeah, I guess my, the underlying question was whether or not these were priority, and it sounds like they were based on a sequencing and a scheduling, so.
Aim physical assessments.
Yeah, okay, very good. I'll make a motion to support this, Mayor.
Okay, I've got a motion by Gandhi. Steve, I know you've got a question.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It doesn't sound like Lane's the right person to answer this. Maybe Chris can help. Where, if these are the ones that are priority, are we, are we limited by how fast we can go? What's, and is, and by limiting how fast we can go with the other roofs that need to be replaced, are we risking additional damage that's going to end up costing us more in the long run?
So if you recall, council authorized staff, I believe at the end of last year, on the asset management side, to move forward with a lot of the facilities assessments. So that project is underway in regards to the asset management program. We have taken an aggressive approach on the roofs per se. We ran into some issues on a previous fire station that we then started jumping, looking ahead, and we've addressed those. So right now, with what was approved in the jail bond side for facilities and stuff there, with the money that council allocated for this current year and stuff, we're doing fine, especially on the roof side. But as part of the asset management perspective, they're looking at the building envelopes, the structural, you know, the mechanical electrical, the main components of the structure. So that will be our guidance as we move forward. And staff is being trained as well to continue to reassess just for the life of that program as it continues year after year. So I think now we are in a much better position than we have been in years past, and then we'll look forward to just continuing to populate that program as we move forward.
This is Jessie. I would like to add, if you recall, we have $3 million in the jail bond for the major facility rehab as well, in our years, you know, starting FI 22.
Yeah, my question is, what are there risks that we're taking because we don't have enough funds to do, the ones that are still waiting?
I think like Chris was saying, we already taking here of the high priority rehab project for the facilities, including those three roofs. And we have, Lane pointed out also in the previous contract, we took here a couple of other roofs. Facility also have their ongoing maintenance funding, you know, for rehab. And Chris pointed out, we're also working on the facility rehab asset management project that will be, have a much more consistent ranking of all the facilities. that will be, have a much more consistent ranking of all the facilities. So we're waiting on that to help us prioritize projects for the geo bonds, you know, three million in there we can use coming up years.
So, Councilor, I don't, I don't think the risk, I get your point there, there are, these are the, the highest priority, these are the ones that have been identified as those that need improvements. We've done some work on TE Harmon a few years back on, it's got two different kind of roof systems on it. But again, we've taken a much more aggressive approach as moving forward to make sure we don't fall back into any kind of disarray with any type of buildings. But I think right now the risks are minimal with roofing from a standpoint, the, again, the three million that Jesse identified from the geo bonds will help us again address, City Hall I think is in that list. There are other projects that we will have in that list as well, just related to facilities as a whole. So I don't think at this point in time, it's, it's a funding issue, it's us getting, do the assessment and getting the projects allocated as we need.
Yes, another project, you know, major rehab we already done is complete a year ago, which is the foundation repair for the City Hall Annex. So all the major stuff, we pretty much took care of already, you know, for the high priority on the list.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? I had a second by Carol McCutcheon, if you'll vote us this time, please. Thank you, that passes seven to zero. Item number five, public hearings, five A, public hearing. Receiving here all persons desiring to be heard on the proposed 2020 Enclave at River Park Public Improvement District Assessment. We've got Ms. Jennifer Brown, our Director of Finance. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. We are here this evening to conduct a public hearing on a proposed assessment for the Enclave at River Park. I'd like to provide a little background of what the Enclave at River Park Public Improvement District is, and then just walk you through a little information around the development and why we set up this particular financing mechanism. So this Public Improvement District was created by City Council on August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen by resolution, and it was a petition from the developer of the neighborhood to create this Public Improvement District to help finance the public improvements to serve this development. This area is fairly small, it's around fifty-four point five acres, and there are only a hundred and thirty-nine homes in this particular section, which is accessed through the River Park subdivision, but is, was not part of the municipal utility district that served River Park. So a Public Improvement District is similar to a municipal utility district, but has a limited authority. However, the benefits are that it eliminates an extralayer of government because US City Council serve as the board for the PID, and it is much more efficient than a MUD because city staff serves to support the district and conduct all the financial transactions. Next slide, please. So the PID was created to reimburse the developer for public infrastructure, which is a similar function to what in-city municipal utility districts do. The, the developer was reimbursed for public streets, drainage improvements, and utilities with all which were required for the neighborhood to be built out, for the homes to be developed. This assessment that is being levied by the, the PID is not for new amenities, it is not for maintaining HOA facilities. It is suffered and apart from anything to do with the HOA or the maintenance and upkeep of the neighborhood. All buyers in this neighborhood are informed of the assessment as part of the closing documents. When they, when they purchase their homes, they are required by law to be notified that they are located in this Public Improvement District, very similar to all residents who purchase a home within a municipal utility district. And however, the assessment in this case is significantly less than what a resident would pay in taxes for an in-city MUD district. For example, the, the assessment that was proposed is five hundred and, I'll just go to the, to the next slide, the, if you'll advance, please, to the next slide. The assessment is five hundred and sixty thousand, and this was able, this will pay the debt service on the reimbursement that was paid to the developer in January of 2019 in accordance with the, the reimbursement agreement. That agreement was signed back in two thousand fourteen, and so the city required there to be a threshold for the developer to reach an assessed value of thirty-one million before the developer was eligible to even get any reimbursement. And so then we capped the amount of interest, and so the actual reimbursement was two million one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the assessments on the properties are used to pay the debt service on the debt that was issued to pay for this developer reimbursement. And so the city funded that debt and we financed it over fifteen years, and so it is a finite term of the debt, and once that debt is paid off, the assessment will end. So that is not unlike, not like the municipal utility districts who can have taxes that will go on for thirty, thirty years in many cases or, or longer. Next slide, please. The proposed assessment is five hundred and sixty dollars per lot. It is a twenty-four percent decline from the 2019 assessment of seven hundred and forty dollars, which on its own was another twenty-four percent decline from the prior year. And so we've made a lot of progress over the last two years, and we anticipate that the assessments will continue to decline. The city does contribute fifty percent of the property taxes that the city collects from the properties in this area, and we deposit that into this PID fund to help pay the debt service, and that is the same thing we do for all of our in-city MUDs. This assessment does come on the property tax bill from Fort Bend County, so we can contract with them, and so this amount does show up on the tax bill as a suffered assessment. Next slide, please. So looking at the blue on the chart here is the historical and then this year's proposed assessment. You can see that the assessment had, the first year was a little over eleven hundred dollars per home, and that was, has been assessed from day one, whether the lot was built on or not. The builders paid the assessment, and then as the homes were sold, all property owners have been paying this assessment since 2015. You can see by the chart that in, in blue, it has come down dramatically since we reimbursed the developer in 2019. And in red, you can see this is what we anticipate the assessment to be in the future based on the debt service payments, the schedule that we have set from selling those bonds in 2019, and the city's contribution of fifty percent of property taxes. If you took an average value home, assessed value in this development is just under three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. If you assume that this was an in-city MUD with a thirty-five cent tax rate, which is pretty common for an in-city district, the tax bill would be twelve hundred and sixty-seven dollars per year. So we are well under what an in-city MUD tax would be for a property such as this. Next slide, please. So we are required to hold a public hearing each year. The notice of the public hearing is mailed directly to all property owners in the PID, and that is set as part of the agreement for the PID service plan. This year, we had an option to submit comments online or via email. We have received multiple comments that Thomas will read during the public hearing, and recommendation is that we go ahead and hold that public hearing for the proposed assessment. Next slide, please. The next steps after the public hearing, and so we'll invite everyone, anyone who wants to speak during the public hearing or has submitted comments, those will be read into the record. The next steps will be that, an ordinance to set the PID assessment for 2020 at five hundred and sixty dollars per lot would be on first reading on the September first council meeting, and then second reading would be on September fifteenth, and then the assessments would be billed by the tax office. And with that, if you'll move to the next slide. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to hold the public hearing.
You know, council members, why don't we hold any questions that you might have till after the public hearing? At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing to receive and hear all persons desiring to be heard on the proposed 2020 Enclave at River Park Public Improvement District Assessment. Thomas, I believe we do have, I'm not sure if we have anybody on the line, but we're now in the public hearing, so if anybody's on the line that would like to make a comment, please invite them in. And then I know you've received some written comments and we'll read those into the public record.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I got all written comments this evening. First comment in opposition, I am a resident and homeowner in the Enclave at River Park East Community. I would like to protest against the assessment fee per lot of five hundred and sixty dollars for the 2020-21 set for hearing on August eighteenth at 3:00 PM. This year, unlike before due to the pandemic, had been debilitating to the community and city of Houston. Pandemic has led to unemployment surge and closing of economy with job layoffs. As such, city of Sugar Land must reconsider any future development. Like many of the residents in the enclave, we are already paying so much due to taxes and protesting against any more new taxes in the future. Thanks, Furros and Yasmin Lambie, 2203 Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, we are in strong opposition to paying an additional five hundred and sixty dollars to pay the developers. That money should come out of our HOA fees or taxes. I shouldn't have to pay additional amount, that's freaking ridiculous. Clearly, you're not allocating the HOA fees, property taxes collected, and other housing fees properly. We should not be responsible for the upkeep of our neighborhood that should come out of our property taxes and HOA fees. Alashan Ali, sixty-two oh three, Calico Point, Calico Point Court, excuse me, Sugar Land, Next comment, the developers, M and I, Devon Street Homes, developed the area for the new subdivision along with the city input and approval. As with their developments, such as Brazos Landing, Avalon, and Avalon at Tell Fair, Enclave at River Park is strictly residential. The city benefits from new developments with new taxes that are charged at the end and throughout the year. Among other items, the taxes also cover the infrastructure work. We residents should not be responsible for that but the city and the, and the developer. Speaking in opposition, Ricardo Cropper, sixty-one oh two, Cottage Grove Court, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, the developers, M and I and Devon Street Homes, should develop the area for Enclave at River Park subdivision along with the city input and approval. As with their other developments such as Brazos Landing, Avalon, Avalon at Tell Fair, Enclave at River Park is strictly a residential area. The city benefits from new developments with new taxes that are charged at the end and throughout the year. Among other items, the taxes covered the infrastructure work. We residents should not be responsible for that but the city and the developers. Please do not add an extra charge to the residents of Enclave at River Park. Bernardo Moreno, twenty-two twenty-seven, Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. Comment in opposition, opposition by community to vote against charge of five hundred and sixty dollars per lot to pay the city for the two point one two five million dollars that the city paid to the developers for the public infrastructure improvements, i.e. water, sewer, roads, light, et cetera. Will it last for thirty years? Developers develop the area for the Enclave River Park subdivision along with the city input and approval. As with their developments such as Brazos Landing, Avalon, and Tell Fair at Avalon, Enclave at River Park is strictly a residential area. The city benefits from new developments with newer taxes that are charged annually throughout the year. Among other items, the taxes must also cover the infrastructure work or future development by the city. We are the residents of Enclave River Park and are not, and are not to be held responsible for the city development, the city and the developers, and they should bear in mind the onerous from the high cost of building and selling newer property. Yasmin Lambie, twenty-two oh three, Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, objection to the above attempt to assess the amount of five hundred and sixty dollars on the residents of Enclave at River Park. I am a resident of Enclave at River Park, the subdivision, the city has chosen to assess the amount on the residents for work contracted by the city. As a resident and in conjunction with other residents, I am objecting to the above assessment as unfair, unreasonable, and as some sort of punishment on the residents of Enclave at River Park. As a subdivision, we are zoned way out of the district as far as the schooling and school zoning is concerned, and to assess this tax on the residents amounts to taking by the city without proper process of the law. Please reconsider the assessment on the residents, as you can see that many residents are not in support or in agreement of such taxing. Columbus and Vivian Anaway, twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-ten Cranbrook Ridge Lane. In opposition, I am voting, I am voicing my strong objection to the additional proposed assessment for the homeowner at the Enclave at River Park by the city of Sugar Land. The proposed assessment should not, should have been disclosed at the time the homeowner purchased the house. If I were made aware of this ridiculous assessment, I would have looked elsewhere. I have been in various subdivisions in different parts of the country, this is the first time I have come across this assessment. Our annual property taxes and the cost of the house we paid to the developers should include the cost of the infrastructure in the initial development. During this pandemic, when many citizens lost a significant amount of their income, it is unethical to add this financial burden to all the homeowners in our subdivision. We as homeowners of Enclave at River Park will stand together to fight this unjustifiable and unsubstantiated assessment to the end. If necessary, we will go all the way to the Texas Supreme Court. Dr. Kenneth Long, M.D., sixty-two oh seven, Calico Point Court, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, as a resident, we are already paying the property taxes. Just because our neighbors is new, why are we penalized for the assessment? This is not fair. Developers and the city should pay for the improvement. Why give developer the tax benefits and then collect it from the resident? Developer already made money on the property by selling us the home at a premium. They can reimburse the city back for the tax credits and the city can pay for the improvement from the budget and taxes already received from us. Shirin Bahami, twenty-four eleven, Flowering Brook Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, the developers, M and I, and Devon Street Homes, developed the area for the new subdivision along with the city and input and approval. As with their developments such as Brazos Landing, Avalon, and Avalon at Tell Fair, Enclave at River Park is strictly a residential area. The benefits from the new developments with new taxes that are charged at the end and throughout the year. Among other items, the taxes also cover the infrastructure work. Among other items, the taxes also cover the infrastructure work. We residents should not be responsible for that, but instead the city and the developer. Fashal Tuhani, 6214 Calico Point Court, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, hello, my name is Ivan Zamora, and I am one of the first residents to move to Enclave at River Park. It is my understanding that the developers, MNI Homes and Devon Street Homes, develop the area for the new subdivision according to the city's approval. As with other developments, such as Brazos Landing, Avalon, and Avalon at Tell Fair, Enclave at River Park is strictly a residential area. The city benefits from new developments with new taxes that are charged throughout the year. Among other items, the taxes are also covered and cover the infrastructure work. Infrastructure work. We residents should not be responsible for this. The city and the developer should be held responsible. Ivan Zamora, 2014 Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, the builder has never disclosed about this potential fee when they sold me the property. As a retired person, my income to pay for the bill are limited. Paul Kwong and Agnes Ma, 2126 Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, I would oppose, I would like to oppose the proposal and ask the residents be not charged with the total cost associated with public infrastructure improvement, especially during these tough times. Alton Pinto, 2123 Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, as a current resident in Enclave subdivision, I strongly object to the additional tax assessment. There was no disclosure of this agreement between the developer and the city of Sugar Land at the time we signed the purchase contract with the builder, MNI Homes. Augustine Chan, 2303 Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, considering the property tax and other taxes we are paying, I would like to oppose this proposal on collecting money from the households. Vijay Shankar Ganesh, 2026 Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. In opposition, I oppose this decision. Please convey my opinion. Indu Kumar, 6106 Cottage Grove Court, Sugar Land, Texas. As a general inquiry, is the assessment recurring every year? What year will it end? How is the assessment determined? Was the home buyer notified by the builder regarding the assessment and payment? Patrick Lung, 2127 Cranbrook Ridge Lane, Sugar Land, Texas. And that's all the comments I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Thomas. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'm going to open it up for comments from the council members. Do we have any? Steve?
Yeah, I would just, thank you, Mayor. I would just say to the residents of this area that if the builder did not disclose this to you, then I'm sorry about that. Surely, it's the law that when you did close, that at your title company, that you got a copy of it. And the problem typically is that when you close these days, you get a stack of paperwork that's an inch thick, and often don't have a lot of time to read through it. So I do, I do feel your pain, but this has been disclosed to you when you closed on your home. As was presented tonight, this has gone down 24% every year, and it's, it's, I think, if you go back and look at your closing papers, you'll find this information.
Thank you, Steve.
Is, is there a motion to be made, Mayor?
No, sir, there's not. It'll be taken up at the next, the assessment will be, I think it's at the next meeting, Steve. So there's no action on this particular item.
Well, the first reading will be September 1st, sir.
There you go.
Mayor?
Ashad?
Mayor, just for clarity, I just want to make sure for the record. Jennifer, this is not new. This is something that these homeowners have been paid on, and you made a point, and I'm being repetitive of what Councilmember Porter just said, it's going down by 24%, and it's going, it looks like from your waterfall schedule, it's going to continue to go down until this is paid off.
Yes, it will not be as dramatic as the decrease this year, but once we sold the debt, you know, we wanted to have a kind of an orderly decline over a couple of years until it will level out. I think it will go down to more than likely just under 500 next year. I'm not sure what the exact amount will be yet, but based on the schedule, it will continue to decline until the debt is paid off in 2031.
In this year, what is the total dollar amount with the homeowners that are there with the $500 and some dollars? What is that approximate? I think you have a slide up there.
The total of the assessment, the individual assessment is $560, yes.
$560. And how many homes in the area?
139. It's a very small development.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Go ahead and move on to item number six, City Council City Manager Report, 630 City Council Member Reports. Carol, let's start with you. Stuart?
Mayor, Saturday was a busy day for Councilmember Kirmali and Councilmember Lane and I, and I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and take the first one and hand it over to Nashad if you don't mind. So Saturday morning, Desi Brothers Farmer's Market had their grand opening, and in the lovely and beautiful environs of District 3 at the corner of Dulles and Highway 6, they had quite a blowout. It was, they had a couple hundred people waiting in line to get in, socially distanced, and it was wild and fun, and we wished them just all the best success.
Thank you, Stuart. Nashad, you want to go next?
Yeah, Mayor, what Councilmember Jacobson didn't say is he was dancing to some Indian music with Sunil Ducker. He totally missed that portion of it. He's got some good moves. But we also, after that, we went to the Smiley Jemont Center where we partnered with Fort Bend ISD and Jason Burdine, and the entire BOD, just about all of them showed up. It was very nice to see, and Dr. Dupree also showed up for a back-to-school drive, where backpacks and pens and pencils and all this stuff, several pallets were donated by the residents of Sugar Land and the county area. And we're there from 10 to 2, and Congressman Pete Olson was even there helping out, and Swatson from our own constellation, our skaters, showed up in a hot costume for an hour where it must have been boiling in there. But it was, it was a good time. It was nice to be out in the public again. It's been a long time since we've been able to do these things. I'm glad some things are starting to pick back up, but it's good to be a part of that. And also, this past week, I also made a delivery to some of our healthcare workers at St. Michael's that do a lot of clinical testing in our area, and they do fantastic work 24/7, and the healthcare workers. I know we mentioned the hospitals as well, but there's lots of clinics and standalone imaging places and all that. It's really tough in those environments what's going on right now, but that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Nashad Hamesh.
A no report, Mayor.
Steve?
No report, Mayor.
Jennifer?
It's already been covered, no report.
Okay, and I don't have a report either. Item number 6B, the City Manager Report.
Mike? No report, Mayor.
Okay, it is now 6:30. We're going to recess into closed executive session.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll read the statement for the public.
Item number seven, closed executive sessions, 7A, closed executive session is authorized by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with Section 551071, consultation with attorney. Item number 7B, closed executive session is authorized by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with 55107, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. And item number C, closed executive session is authorized by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with Section 55107, for personnel matters. Now we can recess into closed executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.